Uh, let me just get my agenda up here. Oh, I gotta look at it. I need my visual cues. All right. We'll stand, folks. Ladies and gentlemen, before our meeting begins tonight, I'd like to ask you to join us in an invocation offered, I think by Commissioner Meinzler.
Yes.
Thank you.
As we gather here, in the harbor of your safety, we thank you for fellowship and family. We ask that you will strengthen us, restore us, inspire us with your love. The Lord would fill us with your peace, so that as we journey onwards, we would pour out our love and grace to others. We ask that our souls would catch the wind of your spirit, so that we would take your promises to all the earth. Amen.
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 Another pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady? Not on yet. Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Meinzler?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Commissioners, uh, well, just generally for the public, uh, public's benefit, Mr. Brady is having some, uh, technical issues and we hope that he will be joining us shortly. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of April 13, 2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the April 13th meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Next, we have a presentation regarding the 2020 census from Talon Floor, our neighborhood outreach coordinator. Mr. Floor, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Commission President. Um, I appreciate you guys having me today to share a little bit about the upcoming census as it relates to the city of Sandusky. One second here to get my presentation up. Okay. Um, so like I said, I'm going to go through a couple, um, why the census is important, which most of you obviously know, and then talk a little bit about the outreach we've done and, uh, updates, and a very important update on the census, um, for the city. So with that, I think we'll dive right in. So obviously, like I said, most of you know, um, at a high level view, what the, why the census is important. Obviously, the result of the population count, um, helps determine directly how much federal funding we receive at the city, and that funding is used not only to support projects that we see every day, but also support local organizations, um, nonprofit. And, uh, these results will stick with us for the next 10 years, making it very important. Obviously, the next census is not until 2030. Um, and on top of that, not only does it determine funding levels that are going to be very vital to the city's growth over the next 10 years, it also determines our area and Ohio in general, um, our political strength, as it kind of helps us determine how many congressmen and congresswomen we get. So that's kind of a high level view. But locally, what does it mean to people? Um, because I think it, that's hard for folks to grasp sometimes. Basically, it is funded, the funds are used to support local projects, like I said. So that could be anything from street repairs to park upgrades, um, and then finally, supporting local organizations, whether that be in-house like Sandusky Rec Department or OGO, for example, who's really doing great work out in the community, um, during this ongoing crisis. So what we've done on the city side of things to really try to promote, um, unfortunately, the, the crisis came at an unfortunate time because we had quite a few community partners lined up to be census stations where folks could come in, get any information they need about the census, and actually fill out their census on site. Um, everything from pediatricians to the Nehemiah Center to 7-Eleven actually agreed to work with us. Um, and then the virus hit, which has kind of put a dent in those efforts some. Um, but we do have an outstanding CCC at the city, um, which is our complete count committee with all kinds of community partners. That's what the picture of is there. And they are all doing an awesome job of promoting, um, promoting the census and making sure everyone within their organization's reach, uh, is getting involved and making sure that they are filling out the census. Um, in addition to that, OGO has been very supportive of our efforts. Uh, they've let us have a presence in their Sunday Fun Day parades, as well as offering to include census materials in all of their food bank distributions. So that's obviously a wonderful opportunity as well. And then on, just one more, on the general promotion side of things, um, in our office, we've discussed potential signs to get some signs out there, just on our city-owned lots, to keep it at the top of people's minds. So when you're out there driving around, you see that, you know, the census. So I haven't filled that out. I better hop on there, www.sensus.gov, 2020census.gov, and fill it out. Um, and I would just like to give a shout out to Christine Zess, who is our local partnership specialist, who's done an amazing job, not only interfacing with me, but everybody else you see down there in our complete count committee, as well as other partners, to really try to push, um, the efforts. We were going to have a presence at the, uh, pizza challenge and different things like that, which just kind of got sidelined because of, like I say, the virus. But, um, we've been really trying to push those efforts there. And then, just kind of specifically, what we're looking at. So the new response map for the census allows us to kind of track things real time. So we know where we need to focus. And currently, there are two areas, two census tracts that are falling behind, as you can see up there on the map, which is the downtown area in the Cove, and really, the eastern portion of town, um, through the First through Fifth Street area down to Foxborough Park. Um, so we may do some targeted outreach, um, let the stats lead us there. That could include events, mailers to those specific neighborhoods, as well as door hangers, anything to just keep, keep the census on folks' mind, um, make sure they're filling their census out. And then, last but not least, a very important update on the census. Congress actually recently extended the timeline, um, I was happy to hear from Mrs. S, for three months, meaning even if the, the response rates are not looking too good right now, we have three months after the last of July, so into October, to make sure we're getting everybody counted in the city. So, um, with that, I would just like to thank you all, Eric, Angie, and the entire commission. Obviously, this is a great time of uncertainty, but I have really, really enjoyed my time at the city, um, and it's been wonderful to be able to serve the city I grew up in. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but other than that, uh, that's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Floor. Commissioners, questions or comments for, uh, Mr. Floor or about the census? You know, there are so many things that are urgent right now. Uh, this is one of those that's important. Uh, we can lose sight of that, but as, as, Mr. Floor indicated, we'll live with the results of this for 10 years, good or bad.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks also. Uh, I worked on the one 10 years ago, and it, there's a lot of work to it. I'm just hoping that we do in fact have over 25,000, so that'll help us get out of this war we're in with this COVID virus.
Well, Mr. Floor, you're a peach. I can't imagine anyone better suited for this job, uh, and, uh, it's, uh, it's a pleasure to work with you. Uh, unless there are other comments, commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Floor.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Heyburger or, uh, Mrs. Cresser, would you remind me how we're handling audience participation at this point in the meeting?
So, yes, Mr. Murray, um, I was taking questions from the public through email for the last, uh, several days, but have not received any. So, to be right into the record.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Could, if, couldn't Dick turn his cell phone on and one, we could have one of ours on here. He could at least listen to the meeting if, in fact, that he's, doesn't look like he's going to get connected. Is that legal, or, I, I don't know?
Uh, I'm, I'm sure it would be. There's a way to participate in the Teams meeting by, by just a cell phone call, I believe. Mr. Heyburger?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Excuse me. So Stuart Hamilton is in my office right now, working on this, and he said that is not a possibility with this, um, software.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry, I'm kind of, I'm confusing it with Zoom, um, which does allow telephone participation. Mr. Waddington, uh, do you have another suggestion?
No, I was thinking if, uh, uh, someone could at least leave their phone on and Dick could call, like, say Kelly, and she could leave her phone sit there, or somebody, Trevor or somebody, they could at least listen to the meeting, maybe respond then. I don't know if that's legal or illegal, but I'm sure he'd like to participate.
Well, they could certainly listen that way.
Commissioner President. This is Trevor. Technically, um, if he can't hear or respond, I'd rather have him not be able to participate. I'd, right now, I'm treating him as if he's not here.
Okay.
And if he's listening in, that does kind of muddy the waters a little bit.
Okay.
I, I see. I, I thought he could listen as the public is listening, although not participate. But if you say we can't do it that way, then that's the final answer.
Yes. What they've said is if someone can't be heard or whatever, you're supposed to stop the meeting. But in this process, I'm treating him as if he's not even here.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
To make a motion to excuse Mr. Brady. Is that appropriate?
It is. Thank you. Second. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Yep.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Uh, commissioners, we have a number of communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Someone care to make a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes. Item number one is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $15,000 through the Housing Development and Beautification Grant Program to Amerahome LLC in relation to the property located at 1035 Hancock Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
Adaptment of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Item number two is an ordinance approving a grant in the amount of $15,000 through the Housing Development and Beautification Grant Program to Haven Fund LLC in relation to the property located at 306 West Water Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number three, please?
Yes. Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for transportation services between the city of Sandusky and the Boys and Girls Club of Erie County for services related to the Sandusky Transit System for the period of May 15, 2020, through December 31st, 2021, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, uh, under the suspension of the rules in full accordance, uh, with Section 14 of the City Charter.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. Sorry, Mr. Harris, I couldn't find the unmute button.
Oh, it's all right.
Mrs. Cresser, uh, unless there is discussion, would you please call the commissioners on the motion?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. And our final item, Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number four, please?
Item number four is a resolution repealing Resolution Number 029-19R and declaring the necessity for the city of Sandusky, Ohio, to proceed with the proposed wastewater treatment plant ferris chloride system rehabilitation project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, that darn mute button. Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Klein, I know there's some history that, uh, goes along with this particular important, um, job and, uh, this legislation. I wonder if you might take a moment to relay that to the commission and the public, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, assuming everybody can hear me. Um, so this is a project that we originally brought to commission back in August of 2019. Um, but it actually dates back a little bit farther than that. Back in 2013, we paid to have this tank re-lined with a rubber liner, which was the original design of the tank. Well, that liner that was in there only lasted about four years. Uh, so we have two tanks like this out at the plant, and we were intending to re-line the second tank last year, but then this one failed again. So we came back and started going through the process of redesigning and looking at re-lining the tank, but realizing that only, we would only get about four years out of this new liner, we decided maybe we should just replace the tanks with a more compatible material. And that process evolved into taking the tanks out of the building, but then building new, uh, outdoor storage tanks with containment. The present worth cost analysis, which was run on re-lining the tanks versus rebidding the tanks, that present worth cost analysis to re-line was about $1.2 million. Rebidding the tanks, we have a cost estimate now of $640,000. So even though re-lining the tank, if we have an upfront capital cost of maybe $200,000 per tank, that long-term value that we get for, uh, not having to do the project every three, four, or five years is extremely worthwhile. And this is, this project, right now, we have little to no redundancy at the wastewater treatment plant for our ferris tanks. So it's extremely important to us to make sure that we can get this up and running as quickly as possible. Um, and when it's all said and done, we, we should be getting, uh, based on our, our sewer services agreement with the county, this should be split 46.18% from them, and the remainder would be coming from the city. So the fact that we got the original bids of about, uh, what was that number, 800, it was over $800,000 was our original bid that we had to reject. We've gone through, uh, the analysis with the consultant. They grossly underestimated the price of the tanks, the price of the process integration, and the price of the pump skid equipment. So there was quite a bit of work that they just really underestimated. Plus, we were told by the contractors that they had little to no time to put into the estimates, into their, uh, bids, because they were too busy, and so they just threw high numbers at it. That's why it came in at 800, over 800,000, and we are extremely comfortable with the price of 640,500. We've talked to other contractors out there, and, uh, we, we feel that this number should get the project awarded.
Thank you, Twine. Uh, commissioners, questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on a motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
And now on the resolution, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. That concludes our regular items of business. We turn the meeting now over to Mr. Mupster for a city manager's report.
Commissioner President, this is Trevor. Can I interrupt real quick?
Please.
It's my understanding that the live portion of this is not working. Um, we are trying to get it up and running. Phew, excuse me. That's why I happen to have to run two or three flights. Um, give us a second. Can you put it on hold for a second? And we may have to do a, a redo of the last four.
Okay, we'll take a brief recess.
What the heck? Redo. Dennis, would you start, Dennis, we've just started broadcasting on Facebook Live, okay?
On Facebook Live?
Yeah. Um, it's, uh, the live on the Teams is not working right now, so it's the only option to broadcast live until I figure this out.
So we need, so all of us need to, who are remote, need to switch to, uh, to the live?
No, we're broadcasting you. You stay on the application you're on just now. Just, just carry on the way you're going just now.
Very well. Okay, I understand. And can someone advise in terms of when, uh, we, we lost the feed, uh, to the public?
It's my understanding that we, uh, we haven't had it from the get-go, so I would advise starting all over again.
All right. Uh, very, very good. That's, that is specifically with the legislation, or we do, do we need to call the roll as well?
I would call the roll as well. Um, give us another second, because I think Facebook just crashed, too.
We share. Give us two minutes, Dennis. Was you eating supper? I don't think I ever seen this.
It is working on Facebook Live. I can see it.
Stuart or, or, uh, Trevor, just give me the go-ahead and when to start.
Yep, two minutes. We're just bringing it up.
It's on. No, I got it. My understanding that we, uh, we haven't had it from the get-go, so I would advise...
Commissioner Murray, I believe we're, we're up and running, so I would start at the, uh, uh, call for the meeting.
Very good. Okay, folks at home, uh, we've had some technical problems. Uh, we are not going to repeat everything we did. That, we did have an invocation, pledge of allegiance, and, and a presentation by Mr. Floor. Um, but we do, we are told that because we've lost the feed, uh, to the public, we will need to, um, revote, uh, and, and take the roll again. So just to put it in some context in terms of, uh, in this in a slightly, uh, different order. Mrs. Cresser, would you call, or, uh, a call and roll, please?
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Twine? Mr. Meinzler?
Here.
And Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Commissioners, uh, uh, Mr. Brady is having trouble, uh, getting onto the call as well, and I wonder if someone might care to make a motion to excuse him?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Um, commissioners, we have several pieces of, of communications from staff recommending ordinances and one resolution. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those and place them on file?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes. Item number one is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $15,000 through the Housing Development and Beautification Grant Program to Amerahome LLC in relation to the property located at 1035 Hancock Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, uh, I would also ask, uh, everyone on the call, when you're not speaking, if you would mute, because we're getting a little bit of echo. Uh, commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman. Oh, go ahead.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Are there any comments on this particular piece of legislation the second time that it's being read? Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Hey, Mike, you, can you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And now on the ordinance itself, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number two, please?
Yes. Item two is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $15,000 through the Housing Development and Beautification Grant Program to Haven Fund LLC in relation to the property located at 306 West Water Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes, item three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for transportation services between the City of Sandusky and the Boys and Girls Club of Erie County for services related to the Sandusky Transit System for the period of May 15, 2020, through December 31, 2021, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harris?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cresser, would you now present our final item, please?
Yes, item number four is a resolution repealing Resolution Number 029-19R and declaring the necessity for the City of Sandusky, Ohio to proceed with the proposed wastewater treatment plant ferris chloride system rehabilitation project, approving the revised specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how would you wish to proceed?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Harris?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion and second. Mr. Klein, I realize that you gave some extensive comments before about this particular piece of legislation, but I think it's important to put this on the record, and would appreciate if you would do so again, please, sir.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. So this project was originally bid out in August of 2019, and the bids came back about $250,000 higher than the engineer's estimate, so we were forced to reject all bids, which was actually only one bid at the time. So, a little bit of history on the project. In 2013, we were forced to reline one of our ferris tanks with a rubber liner, and that liner failed about four years later, right at the same time that we were scheduled to reline the second ferris chloride tank. So, we did a cost analysis back in 2019 when we originally did the design, and it came back that it was more cost-effective to buy new tanks and install new tanks that are more compatible with this material, that might have a 10-year life, rather than relining these tanks every three or four years. So, when we bid the project, the engineer's estimate at that time was 503,000. Now, the engineer's estimate is 640,000. So we went back and did a new cost analysis to determine if relining the tanks would be more cost-effective this time around than it was the original time. And it still came back with that present worth cost analysis that relining the tanks was about $1.2 million on present worth, just based on the fact that we'd have to do the projects more frequently. So, we would like to move forward with this project with the new engineer's estimate of We do feel more confident that the 860 that we got the first time around was high. We've talked to some contractors, they said that they didn't have time to put the effort in that was needed, so they just do high numbers at the project, just in case they were awarded. Others saw where the engineer's estimate was and just decided that they weren't going to put the effort in to understand what we were doing, and most of them at that time were just too busy. So, this time around, we feel more confident with the 640,000, and in the end, the county will be responsible for paying 46.18% for our sewer services agreement, meaning that the city's portion of this would be 344,717 when it's all said and done, and the counties would just be under 300,000. So, if anybody has any questions, I can certainly answer them at this time.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Well, Ms. Klein, I'm glad we were able to save that money, and that seems like a very prudent course of action. It increases our capital costs, but over time, it'll be a whole lot cheaper, and I'm sure the county will be very pleased at that as well. If there aren't any questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted, and that completes the relatively brief, regular agenda that we have tonight, and we turn the meeting over to Mr. Whipser for his city manager's report.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I will start with the donations. First, a donation of 48 face shields was received from Aline Candle from New Albany, Ohio for additional PPP, sorry, PPE for officers, and asks for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. So moved. Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Thank you. Next, a donation of 48 cloth masks was received from Chris Bird Clum for officers, and asks for a motion to approve that donation.
So moved. Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved, and I just think that's a really great testament that we're seeing throughout the country in our own community of companies reaching out and contributing to this cause, so it's really great.
Absolutely. Moving on to departmental updates, starting with police. The physical agility testing for the civil service testing process for new hires has been postponed until the middle of June due to the COVID-19 restrictions. Candidates have all been notified of that change. For the fire department, Aiden Fisher was hired as a firefighter EMT on April 17. Aiden worked part-time with Huron and Perkins and is currently enrolled in paramedic school. Moving on to finance, the municipal income tax filing deadline has been extended until July 15. Also, the city will no longer have an employee available to assist with filing municipal income tax. If residents need assistance, they can contact the Regional Income Tax Agency, or RITA, at 1-800-860-7482, or visit their website at www.ritaohio.com. Tax payments can also be made at the customer accounting office at City Hall at 240 Columbus Avenue. Also, water and sewer bills can be paid the following ways. Visit www.cityofsandusky.com/billpay for the following options. Automatic bill pay, which is available for free, or click or pay your bill online, which you can do for an online service fee of $3.25 per bill paid online. Those who prefer paying with check can use the drop box located curbside at East Washington Row and Columbus Avenue. Please no coins in this drop box, or you can also mail your payment to 240 Columbus Avenue. That's in Sandusky, Ohio, 44870, of course. And also, to talk with the customer accounting representative, please call 419-627-5893 between the hours of 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Moving on to the Public Works Department. The asphalt plants are now open for the season. Also, an update that new signs have been posted reminding all who enjoy the waterfront that it's important not to feed wildlife. This is not only bad for animals, but it contributes to poor water quality, overpopulation of geese, and causes damage to our property. Next, on May 5, the intersection of Fifth and Ogon's will transition to a four-way stop. This change is meant to improve pedestrian safety and traffic flow in the areas surrounding the new Sandusky Primary School on Ontario Street. In addition, crosswalks will be painted in several new locations throughout the Fifth Street corridor, as well as Fourth and Third Streets. On Thursday, bids received by ODOT exceeded the engineer's estimate for the State Route 6 resurfacing project, and the state is requesting a commitment to spend an additional $18,192 from the city prior to awarding the project. The increase is related to unit price increases, but they will not specify which items until after the city agrees to award the project as bid. At this time, staff is seeking commission approval to give direction to ODOT to proceed with the award. A more detailed explanation of specific increases will be provided on a future agenda for a formal amendment to the resolution of 013-20R passed at the last commission meeting. I'd ask for a motion to allow us permission to move forward with a piece of amendment legislation coming as soon as possible thereafter.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and second discussion. I think there's a lot of choice. You know, this is a, this is a project that was 50/50 with the state, and to not proceed with repaving of Route 2, or Route 6, excuse me, that would be a major mistake, and so I agree that that's what we need to do. Further comments? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Whipser, back to you.
Thank you. One last item for Public Works, and this will be a welcome update. The 2020 yard waste service will resume on Friday, May 1, for all residents currently enrolled in the program. I know we've gotten a lot of questions during that delay period, but that will resume on Friday, May 1. Moving on to community development. An update on our local business relief grant program. On April, or I'm sorry, on Thursday of April 23, we announced the results of this program. In total, the city allocated $165,000 to 87 eligible businesses, with grants ranging from $500 to $3,000 per business. These funds are helping aid local businesses affected by COVID-19 and local stay-at-home orders, and can be used for eligible expenses, including but not limited to rent utilities. The city wishes to thank the city commission for their support of this program, and the Sandusky Register for their assistance in getting word of the program out on the street. A special thank you to John Story and staff, who administered what was a very hectic several weeks of this program to ensure that we were able to answer questions, help folks get their applications in who really needed it, and many of whom didn't have experience putting together grant applications, et cetera, in the past, and getting that money out the door very quickly, which happened on Friday. So we are very grateful for his assistance, as well as Director Alasko in McKenzie Sprig for my office also assisted in some of the communication that's related to that program. And people were genuinely grateful and thankful as they found out the nature of their award. Additionally, the revolving loan fund, as has been the case with multiple lenders locally and nationally, loan payments are being deferred to both individuals and businesses to aid in the pandemic. Loans include student and car loans, and home mortgages, to name a few, and the length of time being offered for the verment is very generally between three and six months. Recently, the staff has been asked to consider, by Commissioner Poole, deferring RFL loan payments for local businesses and offering 0% interest during this time. Staff supports this idea, and would ask the city commission to consider deferring RLF payments and offering 0% interest from May 1 of this year through December 31 of this year. Of course, any entity willing or able to continue making loan payments would be able to do so at 0% interest, with the entire payment being applied to the principal loan balance, and ask for a motion to accept that recommendation.
Mr. Poole, would you care to make such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Thank you. Moving on to the Planning Department. Just several dates here for upcoming meetings. The Planning Commission meeting scheduled for May 27 is scheduled at 4:30 PM. Board of Zoning Appeals for May 21 is tentatively scheduled for 4:30 PM. Landmark Commission for May 20 is tentatively scheduled for 4:30 PM. Arts and Culture Commission for May 19 is also tentatively scheduled for City Hall at 5:15 PM. It has yet to be determined if the meetings will be held remotely or at City Hall. For the Recreation Department, in light of the timing challenges both storage facilities and marinas are having during this time, the manager of the Paper District Marina, Towboat USA, is offering a weekly rate for dockage through the month of May. The proposed weekly transient rate is for a 37 to 43-foot boat, $288; for a 32 to 36-foot boat, $256; for a 28 to 31-foot boat, $224; for 27 feet and under, $192; and for 43 to 60-feet boats, of which are only two docks available, $400. The weekly options for owners who have to put their boat in the water, but the marina is not yet accepting boats for the season due to delays. To limit the spread of COVID-19, the marina restroom will remain closed until further notice during this time. Boaters will be directed to go to a local fuel pier pump-out boat. Also, marina staff will make sure boaters understand the six-foot rule of social distancing by staggering boats, which is bow in on even-numbered docks to the stern and on odd-numbered docks. Trevor, I don't see anything here, but was I to ask for a motion to approve that, or is that just an update for the commission?
Through you, Commissioner President, I would ask to have a motion to approve that.
Could I get a motion to approve this temporary change to policy at the transit number?
So moved.
Second.
He's muted.
Yes, you're muted.
I'm sorry, any further discussion? Any discussion? I was noting that I will abstain because I own a minority interest in a competing marina a little ways down the shoreway. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
That motion is adopted.
Thank you. That actually concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions on this or any other subject.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Whipser? Or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
This might be the good time. I bounced it on a couple commissioners, and I was going to check with you, Mr. Whipser, about having a possible work session, like in between meetings, keeping it to maybe 45 minutes, an hour long, to give us budget updates, businesses, you know, what's going on. I think meeting twice a month, especially like this, is tough, so if we could work meetings, keeping it to maybe 45 minutes, an hour long, to give us budget updates, businesses, you know, what's going on. I think meeting twice a month, especially like this, is tough. So if we could work in something, I thought, like even May 4th, or May 18th, sometime in the next couple of weeks, try that for like two or three months, not, you know, for the whole year, especially because there's a lot of moving parts that's going to be happening.
Certainly. I know we discussed that, that suggestion did get passed on, and we were looking at whether it was best to do that through like an email update and answering questions, but if you'd love to do a live work session, the only, the only difference is with a live work session, that would be a public meeting, which is okay, but, but so that's the nature that you'd want updates. And obviously, any, any dialogue, even on an email, that would go back and forth would also be a public record. So we're fine with that. If the other commissioners want to go forward, we could start that on the 4th or the 18th, but certainly there will be regular updates. Obviously, we sent one out via email last week to the commission. I've got some questions to that, as we've been kind of working through these, I haven't had a chance to respond, but we'll certainly do so, and want to keep the commission and the community updated in any way that the commission deems fit. So happy to go with the direction that, that is given.
I guess, okay. Follow-up to Mr. Murray, our conversation with you. I think it would help all of us to hear the information, like I talked to you earlier today, at possibly the same time. And it's, I think there's going to be a lot of moving components, at least for the next two or three months. At, once a month, and I don't care if it's public and they can listen, I don't think they, they can listen in, but they're not required to ask questions or anything, correct?
No, no, I don't believe so.
Yeah, it's my understanding from Mr. Hayburger in the past is that a work session is, is just that. It's for the commissioners and the staff to have discussions. And I think that's a good idea. I don't, I, I want to get the commission's feedback in terms of whether that would be by an email, or, or at a meeting, or work session, I should say. I, I think there are advantages to both. And, you know, I think we'll want to make, make sure we can clear dates. I know a lot of people have a lot of obligations that are already on the calendar, but as a general matter, leadership bodies like this are meeting more frequently during this period of crisis, so that we can have better communications and better updates, just as you suggested, Mr. Waddington. Commissioners, what is your feeling about this?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I think that is a great idea, having those work session updates. Helps everybody in the loop. The only conflict that I would have is May 4th. I wouldn't be available on that date. So May 18th would be a lot of fun.
Yeah, I think the proposal is that we would be essentially having a, a meeting one week and a work session the following week. So I, would be the 4th and the 18th, and then we'd continue on for a couple of additional months until, I suppose, until there's some greater clarity to our, our revenue and expense picture. So that might be through June, July. They're not really quite clear how long that goes, obviously. Other comments?
Commission Vice President is Trevor Hayburger. If you guys wanted to have a discussion, it would have to be in a open meeting. So Eric just sending out updates is one thing, but the moment you guys want to have a discussion amongst each other, it's easier just to do a special meeting or a work, work meeting. So that would be my suggestion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hayburger. It's my understanding that with that meeting, we, we dispense with a lot of the formalities that come with a regular meeting, and it's just a conversation among staff and the commissioners. Obviously, it's a public meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
So for some clarification for me, you just mentioned about meeting for one day and then having a work section. I guess I'm a little confused as to what's, what's being offered or what's being suggested.
So what Mr. Waddington is proposing, as I understand it, is that we would have a meeting, a regular commission meeting, as scheduled now, and then on the in-between weeks, we would have a work session, or we can get an update from Mr. Whoops and his staff. It would be limited to 45 minutes, and frankly, I'd ask if we could start a little bit later, 6 o'clock would be a whole lot better for me.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Yeah, I'm total agreement with Mr. Waddington. I think we do need to get a handle on what's going on. May I suggest that whatever the staff is, is working on towards, especially we need to, if we're going to have, end up laying people off. Mr. Whoops can send us the information in advance, just as we do. Send us updates, so we can look at it, see what's going, see what, what it is, and then have the work session on Monday to discuss and give feedback on what we think should occur, and what we think of what's been provided. Unless there's a reason to not do that, I, I think that it doesn't make sense to come in and try and absorb a lot of information, talk about it, make a decision all in one piece. It just isn't, that's not likely to be productive, so. Or, yes, I support, I support a work session every, on off, opposite Mondays of our meetings. It's just fine.
Mr. Cresser.
If I may, before you set the date, just know that there is a charter review meeting scheduled for Monday, May 4th at 5:00, and we're going to be working on doing that meeting electronically. So that would be an evening. And I know Ms. Twine also said she's not available that evening, so. The 18th would work, though.
Mr. Chairman, May 18th would work, if that date's good with everybody, the 18th. As long as, I'm, I'm just looking for like one a month, just kind of catch up, so we're all getting the same information.
I see. Now I better understand your, your proposal. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it, just how often we do it could be determined as we go along. The point is, we need to know and discuss before we make any major changes going forward with the, with city staff and, and, and changes in our services. We need to have a, an idea of what it is and what we think is going to work well for the community. So I'm not sure you're going to wait till what, till June, before we end up doing any layoffs or any changes in, in, in services. Waiting till the 18th is, seems late.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that is the plan, and I think the staff is working in real time right now. I, I know that it's Mr. Whoops' intent to push out as much as he can in terms of communications, but if we're meeting on a Monday, and he is expected to tell us what the, what his plan is on Friday, there's a whole lot of time that elapses, and a lot of events that elapse. So I'm sure he'll give us as much information as he can, but some of this is pretty fluid. I'm uncomfortable with that, because that's just the nature of a crisis.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meizer.
Yeah. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with, actually, I'm okay with the services that may be cut on Monday, but I don't like the idea of employees. We know the employees are getting laid off ahead of time, and it may get back, and you know, how rumors get going. I just assume that HR and Mr. Whoops have that conversation face-to-face in real time with the employees.
Yeah, I was not assuming that we would, Mr. Whoops does not need our permission to lay off employees or cut back services, and so I was assuming that he would be involved in the dialogue with us about decisions going forward where, where he needs feedback, but obviously, the need for drastic budget cuts is, is pretty apparent. So it sounds like, Mr. Waddington, you are making a motion to set our first work session, a monthly work session, for 6:00 p.m. on May 18th. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's correct.
Is there a second? There's been a motion and second. Further discussion? Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on setting that work session?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
That work session is set. Other questions or comments directed toward the city manager, please? Hearing none, then we will move to old business. Any items of old business? Any items of new business, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
As everyone knows, all seven commissioners are certain understand the gravity of these times due to the loss of the income tax revenue and as a result of the COVID-19 virus. At this time, I would like to make a motion that all city commissioners take a 10% cut until the end of the 2020 fiscal year, and have that money go to the general fund. I just think we expect this from our workers, that we could take the initiative on top. It's not a lot of money. It's, I think, right around $2,200, if we all can do this 10%. And I, I just think it'd be good for us going forward. We can't expect the workers to do this, and then we're running the city, or the city fathers, whatever you want to call us, sitting back in our heels. I know we don't make a lot, but I think every little bit now could, would help out.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
That motion passes. Other items of old business. I say we're under old business or new business? I think I forgot.
No.
No. We're doing new first. We did old. I apologize. See, you let me, you let me off the, you let me away from the gavel for three months, and I forget. I do have one item of new business. Schools have announced a really wonderful program, and I know, I know a lot of you are, are close to teachers, administrators, parents who understand what our students in Sandusky are going through. They're moving to online learning, and they're, they're quickly adapting to a, a brand-new world. A lot of, a lot of kudos for them for doing so. One of the things that they have outlined, and they've asked for our support, is announcing that there is an effort to get parents and students to turn off the darn technology, everything, from 6:00 to 7:00 on Mon, on Monday through Friday, and, and sometimes read to their kids, sometimes have a conversation with their kids, all really, really important. But we have, in particular, as commissioners, been asked to read a story, not, don't pick a long one, and have it recorded, so that that could be used for some of the, some of the younger kids who, who don't know who we are. The older ones wouldn't listen to us anyway, so. And so I understand that the, I understand that the school will be reaching out to us individually to make those arrangements, but the more important thing, you know, to note is, the schools are trying to get all parents and all families to turn off the darn devices, phones, computers, televisions, for just an hour, 6:00 to 7:00, Monday through Friday. It's not a lot to ask, and I think it's a great idea. Other items of new business. I did omit one item of old business. Mrs. Cresser has an announcement, discussions she would like to have with the commissioners. Mr. Cresser.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Murray. I've spoken to each of you individually last week, and this is definitely a bittersweet moment for me, but I have made the decision to retire, effective in August of this year. I started with the city in 1987, after being hired by then-city manager Frank Link, and was appointed to the position of commission clerk in January of 2010. I worked directly for five city managers and two interim city managers in my first 23 years here, and I have worked closely with over 40 different elected officials during my 33-year career. And I just want to say that I'm hopeful that Sandusky is going to recover from our current economic turmoil, and I will continue to follow our progress now from the sideline. I've always been proud to call Sandusky my home, and I'm definitely looking forward to the next chapter in my life. So, thank you.
Mr. Cresser, I want to say, what an absolute delight it has been to work with you in the, in the six years that I was the commission president. You, you supported the entire commission with incredible dedication. You love this city. That was evident every single day that I spoke with you. You will be sorely missed, and we will be pressed to find some will fill your shoes. I know this is a very, a difficult decision for you, but, you know, we, we want to congratulate you on being able to make that move, and wish you the best. And I know that you'll be a tremendous trainer and mentor to whoever it is that fills your, your large shoes. Commissioners, I would anticipate that we would probably have an executive session at the, near the end of the next meeting to discuss how to proceed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Yeah, I'd like to, Kelly, I'd like to also say thank you. I probably have the most years working with you on the city commission. You always answered my calls, requests. You always took them, and I like that you were always the face of the city commission for the last 10 or 12 years that you've been at the clerk's position, and I really appreciate your efforts. And maybe after you're gone sometime late summer, a couple of us get together and have a good cold beer. I appreciate all you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I'd like to extend my congratulations to Kelly. I certainly appreciate all the help that you've been to the commission, but on a more personal basis toward me. As I started volunteering, volunteering for various boards on the city and then became an official, you were probably one of the first faces that helped me through that process, and I can't say enough how much I appreciate you, what you've done, your love for the city, as well as for the job that you did for the city. Again, I extend all the congratulations to you. I'm a little jealous, but I know that you will, you will do great in your future endeavors, and if you ever need anything from me, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you very much. I'm glad none of you can see me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Harris, please proceed.
Yes, I would also just like to echo much of what the other commissioners shared, and just say thank you. You have certainly made my transition that of a, you know, I guess, very smooth. And oftentimes, you have put, you know, the city at the, at the forefront and spent countless hours, you know, making sure we continue to trend in the right direction. But, you know, now I look forward to you taking the time to put those who mean most to you, you know, first. And so I congratulate you and wish you nothing but the best moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, congratulations, Kelly. This is Wesley. Congratulations. You've been an all-star employee at every job that you've ever done for the city, and always represented us well. Wish you the best going forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Can't leave Meizer out. I didn't hear you, but I think you said I could go ahead and talk. Kelly, I, I had the pleasure to be there, working for the city the day you walked in. I remember when you started as a young lady, and I've got about 10 years on you, but you've really done a, a lot of good work for the city, and I know your heart is, is in the city of Sandusky. So yes, and I'm sure I'll see you Friday night even.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady, or Mr. Whoops, I'm sorry.
If I could just say a few words. I started as city manager almost six years ago now, which seems crazy how quickly that's gone, and I swear I'd still be looking for the stapler and, and for about everything else, how this place worked if it weren't for Kelly Cresser, even though she was a commission employee and not an administrative employee. She took me under her wing. She introduced me to all the people that I need to talk to. She helped me to understand how to navigate the different personalities of the commission. And, and she does so much for so many of us, not only on this staff, but in this community on a day-to-day basis. And I know, at least in part, her decision is, is made not only to spend time with her growing family, but also to make sure that the city can stay strong, and, and I just cannot tell you how grateful we are for you and for what you've done for Sandusky, and I can't wait to celebrate you in your new transition.
Mr. Stock.
Commissioner Armory, you're muted.
I was just objecting to the fact that she taught Eric how to navigate commission personality. I forgot that out.
Thank you all for the kind words. Thank you all for the kind words there. Very much appreciated.
Commissioner Murray, you're muted again.
I'm sorry. Other items of new or old business, commissioners? I have something that I would like to say about where we find ourselves out here. The swiftness of the economic damage that's been brought about by the pandemic has been breathtaking to me. My concern is that some of our constituencies may not yet fully appreciate the depth of the city's financial crisis. Whether Cedar Point opens or not, we do indeed face a crisis. The question is how deep this is going to be. If our revenues are down $10 million or some 42% of our general fund, we will be looking at a reduction in services the likes of which we have never seen. Let's be blunt. With that much of a shortfall, we will have trouble mowing the grass and will be lucky to keep two of the three fire stations open. There are those who will argue wrongly that the city misspent its funds during the good years. But as the farmers say, you have to make hay while the sun shines, and we did exactly that. The improvements which Sandusky has made to itself have ratcheted up our ability to attract and retain residents and improve the long-term quality of life in Sandusky. These will not be taken away by this economic crisis, and when it is over, we will be in a stronger position because of these investments. There are those who will argue that money spent on capital projects such as the Jackson Street Pier or City Hall should have been held in reserve for a crisis such as this. Some make these arguments because they do not know better, and it's up to us to explain. But some know better and make these arguments nonetheless. The fact of the matter is that we entered this crisis with a record reserve equal to 20% of our general operating fund. Putting that in some context, Ohio's rainy day fund, also at a record, is only 4% of the state's general fund. Proportionally then, Sandusky's reserve is approximately five times as large as the states we have saved and we have prepared. Likewise, our general obligation debt, that's the debt that is paid by the very same funds that pay for our operating expenses such as police and fire, is at a record low point. No government can or does make plans for the economic crisis precipitated by a pandemic. Let me put it this way. Over the last five-plus years that we have had issue eight funding, if we had not spent a dime of that additional revenue, we would still be woefully short in reserves to meet the challenge ahead. Had we frozen expenditures and not boosted paving, improvements to streets, parks, and trees, and simply banked the money, there would variously be calls to increase spending or eliminate the tax increase. And there, and then where would we be? The answer is either right where we are now or even further behind than we are today. I've said many times, and I'll say it again, if we had taken the TIF money that we use for the Jackson Street Pier or Shoreline Drive or improvements at the sports center and numerous other capital projects, and instead spent those month, those same dollars on personnel or saved them in the reserve, someone would go to jail, literally. Government is very much about fund accounting, and for very good reasons. This is essential to transparency and accountability. We might later wish that we could reel back the money that we spent on various capital projects to spend them on operations instead. But in addition to being illegal, the problem with always maximizing operational dollars at the expense of capital improvements is that it leads to bloat against which governments are always fighting. If all of the funds available can be used for operations, eventually, nothing is spent on capital projects. Operations are essential, but capital projects provide the long-term return to change the trajectory of a community, a trajectory which has been changing as we have watched the last several years. Some argue that the current crisis was foreseeable and that Sandusky relied too much on tourism dollars. To be certain, Sandusky punches well above its weight, but we are not a national government or an international organization charged with protecting public health. We are, and we only are, a city government, and to suggest that we should have seen the pandemic coming or built a reserve to its equal is utter nonsense. Others argue that we have relied too heavily on tourism dollars, specifically the admission tax and the hotel and lodging tax. But it was only a few years ago that we heard exactly the opposite argument, that is, that we did not tax tourism enough. The fact of the matter remains that Sandusky's income tax is well below that of the average Ohio city, which today is over 1.7%. And for larger cities with comparable demographics, the average is approximately 2.25%. Sandusky's income tax stands at a low 1.25%. With robust admissions and hotel lodging taxes, we have been able to keep the income tax artificially low, well beyond, well below levels to provide the level of services that our citizens rightly demand. But with body blows to these two other revenue sources, it is clear that we will be unable to provide anything close to the levels of services they have come to expect over the next two years or so. Of course, we have appealed to our state and federal representatives to communicate the especially difficult position in which Sandusky uniquely finds itself. We remain hopeful that there will be some form of financial assistance to local governments. But with the comments from the leader of the United States Senate, that state and local governments shouldn't seek bankruptcy protection, I'm not too encouraged about that prospect. Under these circumstances, we must and we will make painful choices. Prior to the issue, prior to issue eight, I and others spoke to the fact that we had cut the budget to the bone. This situation is now so much worse today. The cuts will be deeper than acceptable, and our administrative staff is already making gut-wrenching plans about layoffs and devastating cutbacks in services. These decisions are as unenviable as they are inevitable. I hope that you will join me in supporting staff as they do what we must, and for those who must be laid off, expressing our deep appreciation for their service and their angst at the coming hour. Thank you. Commissioners, any other items of old or new business? Would someone care to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.